We're all set.
Okay, welcome to the January 21st, 2021 meeting of Northampton County Council. I have asked Kevin Lot to do the pledge for us this evening. If we can all rise.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Ms. Dumbo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzick.
Present.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Heckman.
I see him.
He's here, he's muted.
Raise your hand, Ron.
Present.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zerinsky.
She's muted, too.
I don't know where she is.
She's here but not on her screen at this time.
Here.
Can I mark her as present?
Yes, please, she, yes, because I saw her before.
All present.
Okay, thank you. She, Ms. Zerinsky did make it known to me that she may have to meet, leave the meeting, so I'll let you know if she, if she does so. Could I please have an approval of the minutes from January 7th, please?
Oh, should you approve? Beg it.
Mr. McGee, in a second.
Myers.
Voice acclamation vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any nays or abstentions? So moved. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address council?
If you're using the Zoom platform, you can raise your hand. If you are on the telephone, hit star nine.
Raise your hand.
All right, we have Linda.
Yes. Good evening. My name is.
Linda, could you please say your name for the clerk so she can enter it into the record? Thank you.
Yes.
And your address?
Yes, my name is Linda Smith. I live at 145 South Sixth Street, Eastern PA, 18042.
Thank you, Linda, you have five minutes.
Okay, I, it'll take just five minutes. My concern is, is that the, at 151 South Sixth Street, behind that house, which is on Union, two houses were tore down, which I was unaware of. And I'm, my concern is that 20, 2002, when they wanted to extend the prison, we, the people in this neighborhood, were upset because of the county wanting to buy the property to extend the prison. My, 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 my thought is, do we have to worry about this happening again? That we have to see what is going to happen with our homes? I don't, I believe it was for a parking lot that the two houses were tore down on Union. And our neighborhood has been built back up. There, the houses that were empty have been bought. The other ones, apartment buildings, have been rented. We have a nice little community here with children as well. Um, and we were just a little concerned. I had talked to the few people here in the neighborhood. So I found out the meeting was going to be on Zoom. So I, that's my concern. Do we have to worry again about all of this? I mean, it's, it's hard to go to bed knowing, you know, what just had happened that I was unaware of. And like I said, I don't want to have to turn around and worry at my age, you know, even though I do still work and all that, to worry about, am I going to have to leave my home, my area, because of this? I don't know what if there's any proposal going on, any planning that's going on for any kind of an expansion of the lots to be built for parking. And that was my concern. And this is why I was excited that I could get onto the Zoom.
Thank you for your participation and being here. It's not my understanding that we have such, that that was not the situation. And perhaps I could ask Mr. McClure to address that in his county executive report.
Okay, that would be wonderful.
Mr. Myers, I don't normally allow people to speak during their time, but go ahead.
In this situation, I know Ms. Smith personally. We explained the fact that people that we bought those two houses because one was condemned, and we had to tear them both down? That's what I thought. I was, I was wanting to make sure we're clear with that.
Well, I did, I just wanted to know, usually when the city or the county does anything in a certain radius, we usually are granted a letter through the mail, which I know the mail's been slow, whatever, but we usually know what's going on. And I hadn't received anything, and that's, well, that was another concern of mine as well, of not knowing, you know, what's going on in the neighborhood.
I would also suggest that if you want to be contacted further, to please privately send your address or your phone number to Ms. Chef Niski so that we could respond to you.
All right.
You'll have to get a hold of me, too.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you for being here. Are there any other discussions courtesy of the floor?
No, for me, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public? You can raise your hand or hit star nine on the phone. I'm seeing none.
Okay, then, thank you. And we have confirmation of reappointments. Mr. Heckman, will you introduce the resolution?
You're muted. All right, there we are. All right, first, let me thank the, the people, Bill and those who took this, took care of this at the committee. I've had to take my wife to the doctor, and so I appreciate that. All right, what we have is resolved by the Northampton County Council that following individual shall be confirmed in their reappointments as indicated hereafter. Industrial Development Authority, reappointment of Philip B. Goffro, 2230 Stonebridge Lane, Eastern PA, term to expire 3/17/26. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, elected official, reappointment, Janelle Connolly, 404 Hazen Avenue, Pinardge, PA, term to expire 12/31/21. Personnel Appeals Board, Carly Bigsabia, 205 Bridle Path Road, Bethlehem, PA, James Irwin, 440 Spruce Lane, Nazareth, PA, Harold Levy, 4373 Hilltop Circle, Bethlehem, PA, Anthony Tony Prestash, 1637 Main Street, Northampton, and Thomas J. Schlegel, 77 West Broad Street, Number 8, Bethlehem, all terms to expire 2/3/23. So be it. Introduced.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick. Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Mr. McClure, county executive report.
Good evening, council. Is Ms. Zerinsky? Okay. We're going to try to do this in a, in a most socially distant way. Ms. Zerinsky has brought to my attention that a board member of the Conservation District is celebrating his 20th anniversary of service on the board. And Ms. Zerinsky reached out and asked if we could, even during this pandemic, continue to move along in a fashion where we recognize folks for their continued service. And I'm going to turn the, this over to her. I'll be back to read the proclamation. She'll prevent, present the pin, but I wanted to give her an opportunity to talk about why we're doing this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McClure, county executive. I think that it's important to recognize that even during this pandemic, that people are working behind the scenes to protect the environment, to make sure that we have our committees and our boards continue to work on behalf of our citizens and that these volunteers are recognized for the time and commitment. 20 years is a huge commitment to the county. And so I think that Mr. Stauffer definitely deserves this recognition, and if we could do more, that would be awesome. But this is what we can do today. And so I hope that everybody recognizes him for the value that he contributes to the county.
Whereas in 1945, Pennsylvania state legislators recognized the need to support grassroots conservation efforts. As a result, the Conservation District law was passed and county conservation districts were created. And whereas the Northampton County Conservation District was founded in 1961, when a group of farmers joined together to promote the use of conservation practices to protect soil and water resources in Northampton County. And whereas the Northampton County Conservation District's main goals are to promote soil conservation, maintain or improve water quality, and promote environmental education. And whereas the Conservation District is led by a seven-member Board of Directors made up of local people from all walks of life. These volunteers study county natural resources issues and make decisions which enhance and protect the local community. Whereas Lynn Stauffer, the public director and resident of Bath, Pennsylvania, will receive the 20-year service award. Lynn was appointed to the Conservation District Board in 2001. Now therefore do I, Lamont G. McClure, Northampton County Executive, on behalf of the citizens of the county, recognize and congratulate Lynn Stauffer for receiving the 20-year service award and thank him for his contributions to his county, his community and his county, Northampton County, Pennsylvania, January 21st, 2021.
Stauffer come forward and accept your pin? Ms. Zerinsky will give you the.
All right. You. If you have anything to say, please feel free to do so, council.
Not much of a speaker, but I do appreciate the work that the Conservation District has done over the years. And they have real good employees working there, and they're conscientious and professional. So it's been a pleasure to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you, do you want to say something to them?
I want to thank him for all his years of service and his dedication to our county and to our environment. And I, and I know.
You know him? You know him, Peg?
I'm not used to this technology, but I know I served for quite a few years with Lynn, and I know what a dedicated worker he is to the district. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Thank you for being here with us today. I appreciate it. Okay. Council, you heard a extensive report from County Treasurer, I noticed I said treasurer, Brian Cope, about the, the work Parks and Rec did in 2020 in the middle of a global pandemic. It's unbelievable. But I'd like to also announce that Mr. Cope and the Department of Parks and Recreation have, by closing on the Little Martins Preserve, created our 20th county park. This is an incredible milestone for Northampton County. This is our 20th county park. We now have, and I want to get this number right, 3,451 acres in parkland and open space in Northampton County. 3,040, 3,451 acres, 20 parks. Now, they're not all developed, and I know Mr. Cope is in a hurry to get them all developed, and one day they will be. But understand, this county administration's position is one of acquisition. Some future executive can build all these parks out. The reason I am about acquisition is, as you know, we want to fight back with respect to warehouses popping up in farm fields, right? We don't want that anymore. And we're all worried about truck traffic on 78 and 22. And as we all agree, the way to make sure that Northampton County's future is green is to continue to preserve farmland and preservation. So you've got 20 parks now, congratulations. I'd also like to announce the receipt of a grant from the U.S. Department of Treasury in the amount of $9.1 million. This grant from the Treasury is going to be used in our C-MED program to prevent and mitigate the forthcoming eviction disaster. They are, we already have partners in the community helping folks who are on the verge of eviction. Fortunately, President Biden has extended the eviction moratorium to March, but at some point, the moratorium will end, and this $9.1 million grant to Northampton County that will be used in our C-MED program will help ameliorate the worst effects of the coming eviction crisis. There is a part of our C-MED program that also helps landlords. So we will be helping folks on both ends of the tragic, the tragic conditions we will find ourselves in once that moratorium is lifted. Council, I'd also like to announce a program that our Area Agency on Aging has begun to institute. As you know, this county government has been highly focused on our older population. We come to work every day thinking about how can we make the lives of the older folks that we serve better? You might recall, when we took office, the Area Agency on Aging was in the red. The state had us in the red. It was an emergency. We are now in the green, thanks to the excellent work of Lori Greco and the people who work in the AAA. But I want to announce tonight a new program where Area Agency on Aging will be loaning tablets to clients in good standing at the county senior centers. Participating senior center clients will be able to take a tablet out for a 90-day loan so they can participate in health and wellness programs via Zoom. The tablets are equipped with a hotspot, so clients are not required to have their own wireless access to use them. The 180 Samsung Galaxy S5E tablets were paid for with funding from the CARES Act under the Broadband Development Program. Here's CARES Act money we're using to support our older population, council. And we couldn't be more excited about this, this, this new program that we're announcing. And finally, and I know this will be something of interest to all of you, but specifically of interest to Councilman McGee, a naval veteran. Councilman Myers, I believe, is a naval veteran as well. They are, they are both, Mr. McGee and Mr. Myers have been very concerned about the way we provide services for our veterans, and it, as you know, is one of our top priorities. And I wanted to let you know that our, Mr. Corio, our new Veterans Affairs Director, received this correspondence on December 29th. Dear Mr. Corio, I offer my sincere congratulations and welcome you as an accredited representative of the Office of Veterans Affairs to represent Pennsylvania veterans in matters related to their earned benefits. Receiving the recognition as an accredited Veteran Service Officer allows us to better reach out to our veteran population. Please take a few minutes and review 38 CFR 14.26-14.635 to ensure you understand the privileges and responsibilities that you acquire with this recognition. You may also wish to review the Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Veteran Service Officer Policy, standards of accreditation, training and procedures, which can be found on the department's file transfer protocol site. The effort you put forth in fulfilling your new obligations will have a direct impact upon the veterans we serve, and you will earn the satisfaction of positively affecting many lives. I pledge to you the complete cooperation of assistance of my full-time staff to assist you in this endeavor. Sincerely, Eric G. Weller, Major General, USAF Retired, Deputy Adjutant General for Veterans Affairs. So, gentlemen, I thought you'd be interested in hearing that.
Well done.
Finally, on an incredibly sad note, our coroner, Mr. Lysick, has reported that for 2020, 477 Northampton County residents passed away from COVID-19 in Northampton or Lehigh Counties. There's more, more of our fellow citizens who've perished from COVID-19, but they, they may have died in another county, like Philadelphia County or Bucks County. But 477, and I'm sure you'll all join with me in a moment of prayerful reflection upon the lives lost, the profound sadness we feel for those left behind, and a re, a, a redetermination to do all we can to crush the pandemic in our little corner of the world, Northampton County. It's a very sad, a very sad day to acknowledge those 477 deaths, and we won't forget them here. The, I know many people have this sense that we're through the pandemic, but in many ways, our worst days are ahead of us. And, and I'm going to talk about our worst days in Pennsylvania, our worst days nationally, talking about our worst days in Northampton County, and our worst days at Gracemonte and maybe even NCP are ahead of us. They are not behind us. And I, I think we all have to brace ourselves for that despite the heroic efforts of some to mitigate the disaster. More sadness, more pain, more loss is in our future. And, and what's my, what's my factual or scientific basis for saying that? Well, as you know, we have a drive-through testing site, COVID-19 testing site with Coordinated Health in Bethlehem Township. The most recent report I received today is that 20.3% of the people who are being tested at that site are positive, which is the highest it's been since we established that site. When we first established that site, it was 3%. So you can see that this, this is, the tragedy is still unfolding. It will continue to be unfolding for the next several weeks and probably months, and we, we all need to brace ourselves for that. With that said, following New Year's Eve, there have been 11 positive COVID-19 diagnoses at Gracemonte for the staff, staff, and currently about 30 positive diagnoses for the residents at Gracemonte. And I referenced New Year's Eve because in the contact tracing they do at Gracemonte, which is extensive, one of the employees acknowledged that they were at a New Year's Eve party and someone there had recently tested positive for COVID-19. So here we go, and we'll do our best, and that's, that's what I know about that. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the county executive?
Yes, yes, Madam President.
Mr. Myers.
Mr. McClure, did you, are you aware with the young lady who asked earlier about not notification when we tore down those two buildings on the ones that were uninhabitable?
Am I aware of that? No, I, I am certain we did not inform the neighbors. Generally speaking, according to Mr. Dirtinger, who also happens to chair a planning commission, those types of notifications generally come when there is a change in the zoning. So that's when you would get notification in that, in that regard. But I agree, we needed to do a better job of communicating with the neighbors in the neighborhood as to why we were demolishing that site. And for that, I apologize to Ms. Smith and, and her neighbors, and I want to put her mind at ease. We have no plans to do anything with the prison. We right now have twice the capacity we need in Northampton County Prison to house raw convicted wrongdoers in, in our county. So there's, she can sleep easy tonight knowing that we're not expanding the prison.
Follow-up question, if I could, I have two more. Have we heard anything, any updates on, on our unfortunate situation with the theft?
No, there are no, the, neither the Pennsylvania State Police or the Upper Nazareth Township Police have given us any, any update on their investigation, and nor would I expect them to until they had something to announce.
Okay, and then the last thing, part, I, I love the fact that we've gotten money to help out the, these folks with the evictions, it's just great. Are we going to have some sort of agreement made up? Or have you even thought about that? If, if a landlord does get funding, that he doesn't have the right to remove anybody after we, after we bail them out?
The C-MED program that you passed, you reviewed, debated and passed, has guidelines for the use of this money that are pretty strict and pretty limited. So whatever, what the particular guidelines are, which I don't have at my fingertips, they'll, they'll abide by.
Yeah, I just wanted to, for the record, so we put it out there, because I, I, I knew that they couldn't, but I wanted to make sure we just put it out there for folks who are listening. Thanks.
Mr. Giovanni.
Ms. McClure, how are you making out with the vaccines out of Gracemonte?
Well, we have about 81% of the residents vaccinated with their first dose. Their second doses will start, I believe, this weekend. So we, we will have most of the population of Gracemonte, the, the people who live there, that is their home, will be vaccinated by the time CVS is done with the three sets of clinics they've agreed to provide for us at Gracemonte. My, the current information I have on the staff is that 45% of the staff have had their first, first dose of the vaccine, and many are now into the second dose of the vaccine. The staff has been informed that the incentive is going to end after this next, next clinic that CVS is providing. And then the staff will be informed of a different non-monetary incentive that may encourage more people to be vaccinated that I will not announce tonight. No, it's not more time off, I can say that.
I hear you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lot.
Yes, similar question. The COs, what's the standard for getting vaccine in their prison?
So, so to the credit of both the Bethlehem Health Bureau and Lehigh Valley Hospital Network, they have both reached out to us to indicate a willingness to provide consistent with the regulations as promulgated by the state, vaccinations for our corrections officers, and indeed, all of our prison, prison employees, I think they all should get it. That's my view, and I don't think the Bethlehem Health Bureau or LVHN is parsing out who, whether you're a CO or not, or whether you're a, a support, support staff. So the last information I had, which is a few days old, only 50 employees of NCP signed up to be vaccinated.
Oh, wow.
We, as you know, have well over 200 people employed there.
Great.
What about the Juvenile Justice Center?
I, I don't have any information for you tonight. As you know, I don't oversee the Juvenile Justice Center. If you want to give me that, I don't want it. So, but I, I'm joking, it's a serious matter. Mr. Green's on, you might want to ask him what he knows about it. But I would think the employees of the Juvenile Justice Center are eligible, just like the employees of NCP would be. And it would be my suggestion that Mr. Green advise them to reach out to the Bethlehem Health Bureau or LVHN to see if they could get vaccinated.
Mr. McClure, can I ask a, a question about the, the CEMED money? How, how can people access that or apply for it, and how is that going to be distributed?
Okay, so CEMED, I, I have that information here. CEMED is being administered by the Easton Area Neighborhood Center, and you can call them at 610-253-4253, or email Ross Marcus at R-M-A-R-C-U-S at E-A-S-T-O-N-A-N-C.org. Also, Project of Easton at 610-258-1100, and Third Street Alliance at 610-438-1763. Also, for residents who are 14 days or less away from losing their residence and have either a notice to quit or a lockout order notice, call 211 to be connected to North Hampton County Tenant Eviction Assistance Program Seeking Rental Assistance.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you, Mr. McClure.
Thank you very much.
Is there, oh, this evening, we are lucky to have Ms. Shelley Brown and Ms. Denise Smith from the State Theater. I'm excited to hear what's been going on, or what we hope to hear. I have to say, Ms. Brown, my tuition payments are going to increase because a direct result of your educational programs, because my daughter has now picked up a theater minor at Central University. I, I'll send it extra to you, but no, thank you for coming tonight, and please let us know what's going on with your program.
We're happy to hear that. And good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for allowing us time, and I'll try to move quickly toward bringing you up to what's been going on at the State Theater. We're sort of a two-parter tonight, Denise and I. In this occasion, I'm really the opening act, and she'll be the closer, she has the visuals. But since we last saw you, pre-pandemic, obviously, when we all remember back then, March 12th was our last production, as some of you may know. And then, of course, that was, that was the close down, and, which we all hoped, obviously, was going to be short. And when it became obvious that it was not going to be, and we saw the situation, and with the capacities allowed in, in venues, we were certainly closed down and could not open. At that point in time, we sort of gathered in and, and came up with a strategy. Some venues across the state and across the country were trying to figure out ways to, and I'm sure you read about it, you know, have seat covers and partitions between seats and retrofit theaters to try to make things work. None of that was able to work, by the way, in looking back on it. But what we decided that it really, it didn't sound like a plan for us, and that we would pull in as conservatively as we could and try to navigate our way through this, much like putting a ship in dry dock. And so that's what we did. We furloughed employees, which is, was a first in the years that I've been at the theater, and since we were unable to do production or any of the departments that were unable to be, you know, used to capacity. And what, what the period became, when we were able to get some employees back into the building, the building is not open, but there are some folks there. What it became was what's been, what we've been doing really for the last months, is schedule things down the road optimistically based on what we know about what's going on in the industry. And then when it gets close to that date and becomes obvious that it's not going to be able to happen, then we kick the can down the road. And, and we go through these cycles of, you know, postponing. There are people that want their money, people that hold their money, people that stay with the shows, and this is just a cycle that we've been in. One of the things that was very important to us, or a couple of things, were that we stay visible and in touch with the community, and as supportive of downtown as we could be, given the nature of things, constantly with our social media presence, and as much as we could do, being out in the community, with being interviewed, we're very fortunate. And you've helped us to be a real beacon in downtown. And so media calls upon us to talk about what's going on often, and we always, we always answer that call and say, we're here, we're alive, and really are fundraising, and that's where Denise is going to be able to talk to you more specifically, since she's our Vice President for Development, and amazing. And so we've been doing a campaign to help us stay engaged, help us to stay, take care of the building. We have three buildings, three very old and cranky buildings, and, you know, those co-ops continue. And of course, now that we're in heating season and everything, that, that's a different thing as well. And, but the bright spot to all of the, oh, one of the things I wanted to say was, for those of you with really long memories, many, many decades ago, there were issues sometimes at the state with people who, who didn't get their money back when there were cancellations for shows. This was a long time ago. But I'm always sensitive to the fact that I want people to be confident, we want them to be confident that if they buy a ticket at the State Theater, that we are responsibly, you know, holding that money so that if there would be a problem, they would get their money back. There were venues locally and across the country that did not offer refunds to patrons during this pandemic shutdown. We thought that was short-sighted, and what it would do would be to make our, our, our folks, our patrons nervous. And so I think we've stood by our word, if people want their money back, they get their money back. What has happened, though, is that people have been incredibly supportive. I don't have to tell all of you about what it's like to be on social media, that it isn't necessarily a love feast all the time. And what we have found is an incredibly supportive community, saying, we want you back, we want to be sitting back at the theater, we have so many wonderful memories. We, we went through Freddie's season, our beloved Freddie's, we were not able to do the Freddie's because, of course, the school shows were, were not able to happen. We did a virtual and a sort of a retrospective. We're going to be doing something different this coming year as well, because the schools, we're ready, but the schools, you know, don't even know, they're trying desperately to stay in session, let alone, you know, there's only three that even registered. So we're going to, we're going to support them in whatever they do, and we have a commitment from Channel 69 for, for the airtime to publicize the kids and celebrate the kids. But at this moment in time, it won't be a conventional ceremony with 1,500 screaming kids in the State Theater. But what we have found is that people really want a theater in downtown Easton. They want to be there, they, they, they're, they're behind us. We have not experienced negativity, or, or, it's been really amazing, and if there's a bright spot in all of it, that's it, that it has really kept us fuel to keep going and keep doing this. I'll be very candid, we have shows scheduled to start in March. What we are is what, what's called in theater terms, a roadhouse. We're an empty building that tours, national tours come in and go out. The only production we produce is the Freddie's. The issue here, the question mark, that, please keep your eye on it, is, is when will those tours get back on the road? We'll be ready to host them, and if we have enough capacity that we can allow people into the building beyond, you know, 10% or 20%, we'll be ready. We will be ready. And then, of course, we'll find out how many people will come back quickly, you know, to sit shoulder to shoulder, that's another question, you know, how quickly will people be vaccinated? That's a whole other set of issues, which we're eager to grapple with. But for now, what we're doing is holding tight. We've been extremely well-supported by not only you, but, you know, other, other people as well, to see that we can reopen again. And that's really what we're doing. And it's a waiting game, fingers crossed. I mean, we have a sold-out Ringo Starr show in June. We have, you know, fingers crossed. So that's what we're doing, and if you have any questions of me before we go to Denise, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. Oh, we were, we had a hut at the, at the Christmas Village, you know, to do gift cards and, and all that kind of stuff. We're trying to support the city as much as possible, and the city has supported us, which is fantastic. And the restaurants are, are supporting us as well. Everybody's eager to get back to, get back to show business. Won't that be fun?
I'm sure Mr. Heckman has front row seats for that Ringo Starr show.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Denise.
Okay, thank you. I'll pick up on something that, that Shelley said. We, we have felt so honored throughout the course of what has really been, you know, a very tough 10 months now, that the community really has stepped up. And I mean, the, the private sector, the public sector, we were able to get some CARES Act funding, and it really has gotten us through. We set a fundraising goal to get us through the end of 2020. Of course, at that time, thinking that we were going to be getting our start very early in 2021, which is now probably not going to be happening as, as early as we want it. But the community has helped us, and the county is part of that. And I guess that's really where I wanted to start. And Shelley and I, on behalf of the board and everyone at the State Theater, want to thank you. The, this county of North Hampton has been very supportive of the State Theater, really long-term, you know, particularly with COVID over the course of last year. The county block funding was extremely, extremely helpful and much appreciated. It has helped us to, to bridge the gap, you know, while we're continuing in this closure. Additionally, the Grow Norco grant, for which we applied and received some funds, helped us to purchase and install 31 touchless faucets all throughout the theater. So that's going to, that's part of the improvements that we're making to welcome our patrons back safely. And we will continue in this mode of, of fundraising. Our members have stuck with us by and large. I think you know we're a member-based nonprofit, and the majority of them have stuck with us and some private foundations, and we continue to just stay as, in as close a communication with our community, all levels of our community as possible. And it's, it's, it's been really inspiring how the community has said, we want this theater here, we, we want you back, and we want to make sure that you get open again. So, and the county has very much been part of that, we appreciate it. But COVID aside, I did want to just take a moment, because not only are we appreciative of the, the funding that the county's helped us with for COVID, but also, we have been the recipient of a hotel tax grant every year for a number of years now. And I just wanted to quickly highlight what we did with those funds in 2020. You know, the purpose of that program definitely meets a mutual goal that we have, to generate tourism, to bring people into North Hampton County, to fill the restaurants, to fill the State Theater when we're open in, in normal times, and just to overall drive economic vitality into the county. So for 2020, what we had done, and of course, we, we applied for this back in 2019, and we started this program right before the pandemic hit in March last year, we had created, and I hope you have seen it somewhere along the way, a destination advertising campaign specifically called Dinner and a Show. And Aileen, are you, are you on, are you able to put up a couple of those slides? Okay, there you go. That, what this is, is this is the, the Dinner and a Show campaign that we launched. This was on our website, and people could actually enter to win a $50 gift card to the theater and a $50 gift card to a local restaurant. As I said, it started in March, and then with the pandemic, everything shut down, but we resumed it again in April on our website, digital billboards, social media. And Aileen, the next one is just a copy of, that's what one of the, the digital billboards look like. And we promoted this heavily, even though we were, you know, not open at the end, obviously, the last couple of months of the year. It was really incredible that we got over 5,300 entries for this advertising campaign through, throughout the course of this. Thirty, I found this interesting, 3,200 of which came since we've been temporarily closed. And it is, that to us was inspiring because, first of all, as Shelley said, we have been working very much to stay present with the community, even though we can't welcome people into our building right now. And the, the, you know, it is definite, it is very clear that the community has an interest, people, the notes that we've gotten with, with, you know, these entries, we can't wait for the theater to be reopened again, we can't wait to come back and enjoy the arts in your, in your beautiful building. So it's, that's really been an incredible thing, and we thank you for that, because the county did help us through this campaign to stay present during that time. And it's a great partnership with the restaurants. The first slide that was up, we had done the first one with Third and Ferry and, and Pearly Bakers and a few of the other restaurants. So it's a nice way that we can have that synergistic partnership with the restaurants downtown to just try and, in normal times, when we can draw people down. And I think that that's helped us to create that, that, you know, that continuity during this time. And then finally, Aileen, if we're able to show that, featuring our own Shelley Brown, here was the video.
What could be better than a show at the State Theater? How about dinner before or after the performance? After all, we are your destination for dinner and a show.
We love that. So that was, that was all part of the campaign, and, and we just wanted to share that with you, because it, it was a most unusual year, but the, the partnership and the support that we've gotten from the county has been, you know, very consistent. And, you know, we have always tried to invest those funds as effectively as we can to, you know, achieve the common goals of, of generating tourism. Even in this, in this off-year, I think it achieves some very good goals. And we very strongly believe that, you know, the arts are going to be, and especially the performing arts are going to be needed more than ever, both for their social impact and for the economic impact that they have in communities, you know, as we begin to heal and, and climb out of this, this pandemic. And we're, we stand ready to do our part, we're going to continue on our fundraising to get through. It's, it's a little bit of a moving target, we kind of thought we'd be back open by now, and it seems like the end zone keeps on getting a little bit further away. But we are, we are hunkered down, we are doing everything we can to responsibly get ourselves through until that curtain can rise again. And we thank you for helping us to get there. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mr. Myers?
No questions, just a comment. Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir.
My comment to you is, you know we have a new president.
Yes, sir, I do.
If you're Dancing with the Stars, did she be selected as your, one of your participants? Because Mr. Myers is signing away.
You know, I was looking at that video too, and that video of Dinner and a Show was shot like March 1st, and I'm looking and thinking, that looks like 100 years ago. Doesn't it feel like it? I mean, before all of this, holy cow. But I will keep that in mind. I will keep that.
I expect you to bid. I have a question for either of you. I know, you know, I'm a big proponent of the Freddie's, also of your educational programs in the summer that I love to refer potential students to. Are you tentatively doing any plans for this summer to open that camp again? Are you, is that part of your scheduling or not this year?
It's, yeah, we, we announced that, and that, that's been on sale. But what we're waiting for is to determine whether we'll, you know, have the, the capacity allowed to do it.
I assume, you did not, you did not do it last summer, right?
No, we had to cancel because we were completely shut down. And just one last thing, if I might, to give you all just one quick insight. One of the reasons that the touring is so difficult, that what we're waiting for, you know, is that if you think about it, these, these shows that go on the road, these Broadway shows and even these large rock shows and everything, they're buses full of people staying two and three to a room, traveling from city to city. It, it's just, and the rehearsals, you know, they have to get started, they have to, they have to practice, they have to do all this. So the lead time that they need to do that, you know, and without people's being able to get together and do all of this stuff, that's, that's what we're waiting for. It isn't, it isn't like we can just say, okay, now we're ready. I mean, these people need months to get these tours on the road. I mean, Broadway in New York, Hamilton has a goal of reopening on July 4th. I mean, New York needs those theaters open, everybody, yeah. And I mean, it's not that, it's, it's not the buildings, per se, it's the, all the rehearsed things and everything that goes along with, with, you know, doing these productions. So that's really what, what the holdup is. So, but we just can't thank you enough. I just hope we can leave you with that, that we are very, very grateful, and, and we feel so hopeful that when we can open up again, that it's going to be, they say, a whole new age for, you know, for gathering. I think people have missed it terribly, and we want to welcome them in as soon as we
Thank you both for being with us this evening. There are no other questions? Okay, we'll see you at the show hopefully very soon.
Hopefully. Hopefully soon.
Thank you for having us.
Very much. And Aileen, thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Is, back to our agenda. Is there any old business that anyone needs to bring up? Seeing none, under new business, we have consideration of a personnel request resolution from the Department of Court Administration Domestic Relations Pre-Trial Services. Mr. Heckman, will you introduce the resolution, please?
Certainly will. This was discussed, but at the committee meeting, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Conference Officer One, Pay Grade CP 221A, Salary $45,127, shall be eliminated in the Court Administration Domestic Relations effective January 22nd, 2021. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Pre-Trial Administrative Case Officer, Pay Grade CP 221A, Salary $45,127, shall be created in the Court Administration Pre-Trial Services effective January 22nd, 2021. And everyone received the budget sheet that comes with it and the job descriptions. And it's a, a net of zero between the two positions, the eliminated and the created. So that is now introduced. I, I believe Mr. Green is still with us.
I am, I'm here. Thank you.
So there you are, Ms. President.
Is there any discussion? As you said, we discussed it earlier, but any further questions from Mr. Green?
Yes, just one, Lori, because McCord couldn't answer that. Can Mr. Green ask us what's the status on the Personnel and Juvenile Justice Center? For the COVID shot?
For the vaccinations, Mr. Myers?
Absolutely.
Our medical director, Dr. Albert DeFranco, he is a partner with St. Luke's Hospital. And he has made those arrangements for the staff members to receive their vaccinations. I also received correspondence from the Chief Justice of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, who asked Judge Corey and myself to rank all court employees based on necessity. And I ranked our Juvenile Justice Center employees, number one, because they are in talks with the Governor's Office and the Department of Health to have a allotment of the vaccinations for court employees. Now, Dr. DeFranco reached out to St. Luke's. Those employees are on the list to receive the vaccination soon. And I don't know how many signed up for it. I will get that information for you. But we've been very fortunate in the juvenile center where we've only had a handful of positive staff members, approximately five since the pandemic has started. And we've only had one resident positive for the COVID vax, COVID-19, since the pandemic started. We have very stringent policies down there. Dr. Franco works with the director very closely on it. And we, we take it very seriously, like any other 24th facility. But it's a different world in those facilities and we have to be very, very precautious. So we've been very fortunate with the Juvenile Justice Center and our numbers of what has occurred there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call for the vote?
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. I thank you, Council. Appreciate the support. Thank you very much.
Next, we have a consideration of the Fiscal Year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Mr. Lot, will you please introduce the resolution?
This was, okay, hang on one minute. This was discussed in a financial committee meeting. I will introduce it now, therefore be resolved by Council, the Council of the County of Northampton. Number one, that the Fiscal Year 2020 Action, Annual Action Plan for the Fiscal Year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Funds is hereby approved. Two, that it is coaching of the conditions that are imposed in the undertaking and carrying out community development activities with federal financial assistance. Number three, that the county executive and the Department of Community and Economic Development are authorized to execute and file the financial assistance applications for $3,43,952 for the combination fund totals of Community Development Block Grant, Home and Emergency Solution Grants to HUD, who has made this amount available to carry out Northampton County's program. Number four, that the county executive is hereby authorized to provide such assistance and/or certifications as required by HUD, and also provide any additional document that may be requested. That so much introduces it, Mrs. President.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further discussion on this? It was discussed earlier. But if anyone has any more questions or... Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yay.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have a consideration of a donation to Grace or several donations to Grace Town. Mr. Heckman, will you introduce the resolution?
Oh, oh, okay. All right, I think this is it. I hope so. All right. Whereas, oh wait, do you want me to read the whole thing? Or what?
Last line.
Last paragraph?
Now there.
Yes, you could just summarize and then read the last paragraph.
All right, we're getting, well, I, I think it's important too because we, we accept gifts on behalf of the county. And the Military Order of the Purple Heart Lehigh Valley, Chapter 190, has donated $705 to be divided and split evenly, equally among the Veteran Personnel Fund accounts. And an anonymous donor has provided a donation of four iPads and four sets of headphones for use by Grace Town residents for communication with loved ones, valued at $1,753.52. And whereas Tri Plus Services has donated two new 32 gigabyte eighth generation iPads in cases and one used iPad Air 2, 16 gigabyte with case. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the county executive to accept on behalf of Grace Town the above mentioned donation. So move.
Okay, and now any discussion? Call for the vote?
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I think it's important to note, we greatly thank these donors. We always appreciate, you know, getting these things, especially for some of our more vulnerable citizens. So I want to express, before I should have said it earlier, but I want to express my thanks to, to the donors.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us on behalf of Council. And next, we have consideration of a donation to Northampton County Emergency Management. Mr. Myers, will you introduce the resolution?
Most certainly will. Now, therefore be resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby accept a donation of $40,000 on behalf of Northampton County Emergency Management Team.
Discussion? Call for the vote?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you. And now we have consideration of an Article 13 contract. Ms. Zidian Sullivan, Mr. McGee, will you please introduce the resolution?
Absolutely. Thank you. Now, now therefore be it resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve the contract with Mizadi and Sullivan for the EAP, which is the Employees Assistance Program. And they were our incumbents. This was moved that, discussed at the committee meeting, financial committee meeting.
Any discussion on this contract? Or any further questions? Seeing none, call for the vote?
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss at this time? Seeing none, Council Committee reports, are there any? Mr. Heckman?
I guess, I, I just got to listen to most of it, so I'll give the report. The Council Personnel Committee met and the themes of which we discussed at the meeting. That's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Rinsky?
We had the Energy, Environment and Land Use Committee meeting today. This afternoon, we discussed potential joining litigation, Act 20 litigation with Penn Environment and the Philadelphia legal team. We also briefly discussed the Pennies Pipeline. And also, we're given a presentation regarding the 2020 Parks Recreation and Open Space Accomplishments, which, of which there are many.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Finance Committee met tonight as well. And most, mostly all the agenda items were voted and approved tonight. We also had a Controller's Report. And they, one of them was a Archives Cash Collection, which is, which is an annual audit of anybody that has, handles cash or funds in, in the county. And then there was four magister, magisterial district judge reports that happen every two years. Two of them were interesting. Two of them, they, they found some issues on two of them where the auditors did their job and found, they noted, they noted a few things that they didn't see right. And the council recommended that they're going to make sure that the judges see this information. So, other than that, that's, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Just one comment for everybody, that the committee and liaison assignments are completed. You all should have had a chance to see them. If anybody has any questions or any difficulties with something to which they've been assigned, let me know. I mean, I think everybody has either been a member of such before. There's not too many people starting new ones. But let me know if there's any concerns. With that, are there any liaison reports? Mr. Lot?
Yes. First, before I start my liaison report, I just want to show a little pride in the county. Though the president was born up the road in Scranton, the person that swore him in spent his childhood, early childhood years in the county of Northampton. The Supreme Court Justice Roberts lived in our county as a young, young boy. A lot of people don't realize that. He went to elementary school at Sockin Valley School. So I just thought I'd throw that out there because I think it's interesting that number one was swearing in and the president came from our location. Geo Advisory Board, we, the, we met December 15th. It's of course a Skype meeting. They're continuing to train. They had Academy class. They had nine graduates from that class. And they were doing, you know, working alongside shadowing another CO. And certainly by this time, they're on their own, doing their own thing. So we have nine new cadets that graduated. Mr. Kraft has been trying to get new tablets. That got pushed off to this month. We were trying to get another double our size of tablets for the prison. Right now, we have 220 tablets. We're looking to get it up to 440. This is critical. Because unfortunately, with the COVID, we cannot have, they cannot have the prisoners out and about. They can't have visitors in. The tablets are their way to communicate with their family and, and anybody else out there. So we, they've been working really hard to get those tablets up and online. I'd imagine they might be by now. Or getting real close. Everything's shut down. It's a lockdown at the prison. You know, we did have some very isolated activities, but that's really been locked down. All recreational time has ceased. The work release program continues to be shut down and they continue to do testing the inmates and, and staff to try to control it. Ms. President, add ends that liaison report. If, if you don't mind, I'll go right into Lehigh Valley Economic Development Liaison Report.
Thank you. Please do.
We, they, they announced their annual meeting, which is usually a big meeting at Arts Quest, is going to be virtual. It's going to be held March 16th. They are hiring an outside consultant to do a strategic plan, fund, study, to kind of get out there and find out what the most valuable thing is we have to offer in, in our market. You know, the pluses, the minuses, so we, they can better market our area. It's not, it's about an 80, no more than $80,000 plan they're going to spend to create that plan. One thing I like that I, I heard they did, what was that? The Hot Career Guide. They go around, they talk to local employers, find out what skills are needed. And then they put a guide together that shows you what are the hot jobs out there, what are employers looking for? What the wages are, what kind of education you need, or what kind of training you need for these jobs. And they have gotten them out to different schools. They give them out to the high schools. They told me they hit 51,000 students with, with this information. They, they work hard to continue marketing us and looking to market us on a more of a national level. And that pretty much hits the highlights of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other liaison reports? Seeing none, Council Clerk, do we have any report?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Solicitor, any report?
Nothing.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
No, make it.
Wait, that was so quick. I didn't, is that Mr. Giovanni? I'll let, I'll let Ms. Dumbo call it. She has more acute hearing than I do. Second?
Yes. Hello, Mr. Paul.
Acclamation to adjourn.
Yes, yes. Peace out. Yeah.